Vice Speaker on Bill Number 13-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 13-32 as amended and substituted on the floor. I'm sorry, I didn't put that correctly on the bill. I've been corrected by the clerk that it should read, rather than substitute by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations, it should read 13-32 as amended and substituted on the floor.
And you'd like to speak on it?
And further substituted on the floor. Anyway, first, I'd like to thank all of you for the very constructive criticisms and concerns that you've raised on this bill. And actually, I'm very happy that some of you may actually be more concerned about this issue than I am. And I'm happy to see that, that there are some people, there may be bigger nannies than me in this legislature, and I welcome them. But I really want to thank also the Chairman on Future Generations for his patience in allowing my staff and his staff to work together to try to get this through. And so what we've done here with everybody's indulgence and concurrence is to completely redraft the bill. It's still the same intent. It's still the social host bill. It's still trying to get adults who provide alcohol to minors and to hold those adults liable for any injuries and property damage that may result from it. But it takes into concerns issues that were raised by the good Senator from Timouning that, about landlords. And it makes it very clear on page two, between lines 14 and 18, that it shall only apply to a person who has present and current control of the location at the time the consumption occurs. And this provision, this prohibition does not apply to the owner of rental property or the agent of the owner of rental property unless the consumption occurs in the individual unit in which the owner or agent resides. So it has, you have to actually be there, not, you know, for those of you land barons and baronesses that have property all over. It wouldn't hold you liable unless you are actually residing in that specific premise and that you had present and current control over the property and could have prevented the consumption. It also addressed one of the other issues raised by, again, the good Senator from Timouning, that it does not apply to persons licensed or appointed to manufacture, transport, or sell alcohol into public law acting in a lawful manner. That was not the intent of this. And we tried to make it very clear with the title that it was the social host bill. So those were the major amendments that were made in addressing the issues that were raised on the floor. To make it very clear that this was a social host bill, I completely redrafted, renamed it to the Guam Social Host Bill to make it very clear. It wasn't an intoxication bill, it was a social host bill. And Madam Speaker, I just, I want to apologize that I didn't realize that I had stolen an idea that you, the current governor and the current lieutenant governor, had in the 30th Guam Legislature. I didn't mean to. And I want to give recognition to the fact that in the 30th Guam Legislature, a bill introduced by now Lieutenant Governor, I mean, yeah, now Lieutenant Governor Ray Tenorio, co-sponsored by you and the current governor, Eddie Calvo, tried to address this very issue in a, I think it was called a party, party, party host bill or something. Unfortunately, it didn't get very far, but we're still trying to address this issue. I hope that this bill addresses everything. There was one concern that I'd like some discussion on, on the floor. And because of the fact that you've all provided such great insights, I thought maybe I'd bring this issue to the floor and see how all of you felt about it. In the very first page, it starts out with, "No person 21 years or older shall knowingly give or otherwise make available any alcoholic beverage to a person under the age of 21." It has been brought to my attention that 18-year-olds are adults and legally liable for their actions. And if they are able to break into their parents' liquor locker at the house, or are able to somehow can get their hands on some alcohol and provide it to some other individuals under the age of 21, could they and should they be held liable? I am open to striking those four, first five words, 21 years or older, if that is the will of the body to remove that. But I tried, I started out at 21 because that was the way that it unfortunately is written everywhere else. But I think it was, it was very insightful that one of the members of the legislature brought to my attention that it is possible that a, an adult, though they're not able to drink, an adult over the age of 18 is liable for their actions separately from their parents after the age of 18. So I'm just, I would like to just kind of throw that on the table. And if there is sufficient support for the, for amending that, I would, would love it. I just didn't want to make the change, make it that big a change from as originally introduced and blindside you. So I wanted to throw that on the table and see what the discussion was from members of this legislature, whether or not that should be changed to, to address adults 18 years of age and older who could and should be held accountable for their actions, even if they aren't able to drink alcohol. So I want to again thank all the members who participated in the discussion the first day that the bill came to the floor, gave some excellent, excellent ideas on how to be able to improve it, to tighten it up. And I want to thank the Chair for allowing me to further substitute this and the indulgence of the body for allowing me to come back on again to bring this back up.
On the motion?
But I leave it open on that one issue, unless everybody's happy with it, we can just move forward.
It's not in a form of amendment.
No, it's not in the form of amendment. First, I want to hear the discussion, and if there is, or...
If there isn't, then, on the motion. Senator Dwayne, you should recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that, first of all, I'm glad that the bill is substituted. It seems like it addressed a lot of major, major issues that could have created additional complications. On this issue of the idea of striking the current language to basically encompass those of adult maturity at 18 years of age, and that seeming gap that exists now between 18 and 21, I offer two thoughts. My first thought would be, I think it's a good idea, simply because having spent the time that I did as a Director of Department of Youth Affairs and working with, as I mentioned when I opened on this bill and prior to becoming a co-sponsor, the type of education through the Peace Council and through all of this effort to try to bring awareness to young people about the devastating effects of early consumption and experimentation and of alcohol and the effect that it could have on their lives going forward. So the tool really that exists by creating that, I believe, is something that further enhances and further gives the capability of those who are trying their best to educate our young people on what the laws of the land and liability, but not only that, but just the overall effects of things that could hinder their development, you know, the challenges that exist. I think that would be an excellent tool. I guess this is almost, this would be inherent to the author really in terms of, you know, his knowledge and as we debate. But when it comes to applying this law in the legal sense, I guess my other thought would be that if, if a crime were to have taken place whereby this law would have its applicability, that would be determined by the court, simply because I've also dealt with a number of issues, having to have cure and custody of those who, at the Department of Youth Affairs, can be held up to age 21, but were otherwise waived by the Court of Law due to the nature of the violation of law that took place. So I guess I rise somewhat conflicted, but I think I'll lean towards the side of, I think it's a good thing, because I think it brings more awareness, it brings more opportunity for those who work hard every day to try to reach our young people, to educate them on the harms of many things, of course, that they're exposed to. But particularly in this instance, and I'll just say once again, Madam Speaker, and reiterate the fact that if you go to this very valuable repository of knowledge and data gathered over the last six to eight years, you will see once again that it is alcohol and tobacco that are the most devastating to our young people in terms of their early association with juvenile delinquency, and also the long-term effects of their development and sometimes going from what they call and consider substance abuse and mental illness, which a lot of times are co-disorders, one causing the other. So that's a lot of, I guess, history, at least with what knowledge I was able to gain by professionals in the field. But at this point, Madam Speaker, I would offer that as my reasoning to say, I think that the speaker, the author of the bill, has brought to the attention that I think it's something we should do. And that's simply to eliminate those first five words there to ensure that it would be the age of majority whereby this would be, you know, implemented. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the substituted Bill 13, Madam Speaker.
So you're not making that amendment either?
I would not move an amendment at this time, Madam Speaker, because I think that the author was very gracious in offering open dialogue on the issue. I mean, I, that's just my school of thought from my particular experience and, you know, how I feel at this moment. Like I said, I was somewhat conflicted with understanding that youth are waived, you know, in terms, in times when crimes reach a higher degree of felony. But I will listen to the dialogue and at the end, if I could, if it feels that the direction is going that way, or maybe the good author would just move an amendment in his close to do that. But I want to participate, I want to listen to the debate at this point. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Chair recognizes Senator Lim Tiako.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In regards to the issue on whether to potentially amend the, this section where it removes 21 years or older, I would just proffer the idea that it would just make the law more consistent in the sense that, you know, how our current laws are currently structured in that you're either tried as a minor or you're tried as an adult. I think what this bill may not intend to do, but potentially could do, is leave somewhat of a gray area from the ranges of 18 to 20 on the applicability of the law. Therefore, if an amended amendment is proffered, I would support that in the sense that it's just very clean, it's consistent with other laws, and with the current designation of a minor or an adult. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Speaker Pangolinan, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in opposition to the substitute version because it is inconsistent. This bill would hold private citizens in their own homes, in their own properties, where somebody may come in and consume alcohol, uninvited guests, et cetera. You know, you have these big, you know, gatherings and so forth, would hold them liable and it would subject them to suits. They could lose their house, they could lose their car, they could lose everything if one of these individuals should get ahold of a beer at that, go out and drink, or two beers, or three, whatever it would take to get them to be legally drunk, get into an accident, get sued by the, you know, the individual's family. And it's inconsistent with how we apply it. And these are people who are not profiting at all from the sale of alcohol. They're holding a family party or a village fiesta. They have no, they're not profiting from the sale. But yet those that are profiting from the sale of alcohol are not subject to the same liability. It's inconsistent. Those that sell alcohol, make a profit, are immune or is, are not subject to the liability of somebody getting drunk at their place, going out and driving and injuring somebody. They are shielded from the liability. But yet they're the ones that are making a profit. And those families that are hosting parties or hosting fiestas are not, are become liable and could lose everything. It's inconsistent in its application, and therefore, that was the discussion I was wanting to ensure occurred, that there was consistency in the application of liability. If we are going to be truly concerned about, you know, ensuring that these people don't get ahold of it, then where are these accidents occurring? Where are these kids coming from? Are they coming from parties and fiestas, or are they coming from the bars? In which they're able to somehow get around the controls and consume alcohol there, you know? So those statistics, I think, we need to take a look at. And I agree, if we're going to hold one set of individuals liable, then we should hold the other set. And it's actually perverted in its sense that we're going to hold those that are profiting from the sale of alcohol, hold them free of liability, and those that have no profit at all and are just trying to be, to have a party for their family or continue the traditions of fiestas, and, you know, and just, and expose them to that liability. I think if we're going to do one, we should, for the other, we should do it, we should hold the same standards to the others. And therefore, Madam Speaker, unless we kind of go back and take a look again and see what we, what we need to do. I know that, you know, the bill, I support the idea of trying all that we can to curb underage drinking and the devastation it has when it becomes irresponsible, you know? And therefore, somehow, people get injured, you know, unfortunately, and to the devastation of families. And we want to prevent that, we want to do all we can. But I really think it's, if we want to do that, then wherever the possibility of that being consumed by these young individuals, then there's, then we should have the same kind of exposure and the same kind of responsibility for everyone that sells alcohol, or everyone that provides alcohol for consumption, you know, to the general public, and hold them to the same standards of liability. That's how we can ensure that we close both doors. I know we want to close one door right now, but if it's the one, maybe it's the one door where there's the least number of violations occurring and the least number of individuals consuming alcohol there and getting into an accident, and that the door where there is a bigger opportunity and a bigger problem is being left wide open. And, you know, I really thank the good Speaker for, Vice Speaker, for what I say has been, you know, just courageous efforts in all of these efforts and all of this. And, you know, when we looked at the sale of tobacco, when we looked at the sale of alcohol, raising the drinking age, you know, has it really diminished the consumption? You know, we were all worried about what it would have on the effect of our economy. When the airlines said, "No more smoking on the airlines," we thought our Japanese tourism was going to die because nobody was going, no Japanese was going to come to Guam because he couldn't smoke on the airplane. And did it? No, it didn't. So if we're concerned about, if we put that liability on the, on the bar owners, that the bars are going to go out of business. Will they? We haven't seen it. We haven't seen that statistic compiled or anecdotal-wise, really, in terms of what the effects are. It's been a positive effect on our community. It's going to, it's going to yield long-term benefits. May have a little bit of short-term pain, but it's going to, it's going to yield us in long-term benefits in the health of our community and the expenditure of our economic resources towards healthcare. It's the same struggle we are finding on the national scale with regards to Medicare and Medicaid and how much it consumes of our gross domestic product, gross national product, and what drives the cost of the healthcare. It is, it is, in regards to tobacco and alcohol consumption, the complications that occur to the health of the individuals when they have and contact some kind of ailment. The alcohol's, and excessive, excessive alcohol and tobacco consumption, except for tobacco, it doesn't have to be excessive. Tobacco is the one product that if you follow the directions, it'll do exactly what it's supposed to do, kill you, you know? And the consumption of that and the complications it presents to anyone at all that has any kind of health issue exponentially increases the cost, not only the immediate cost, but more importantly, the long-term cost. Because it doesn't kill you today, and it doesn't kill you five days from now or five years from now. It gradually kills you and kills your immune system over the years in which you have to continually up the allocation of your economic resources to that healthcare. And that's the problem we have, and that's the dilemma we have, and that's the challenge we have in trying to get control over healthcare expenditures over the short term and the long term, and the effects that these two products have towards that increase. And so in this regard, I digressed a little and I apologize, but I really think that, you know, will I vote for this bill the way it is? I don't want to. And maybe the way that I could just do it would be to just say, just strike D at this time. And so I would like to make a motion to just strike Section D on the second page of the bill, two, under the subsection two, sub subsection D, shall only apply, shall not apply to persons licensed or appointed to manufacture, transport, or sell alcohol in the public law acting in a lawful manner. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment to, on page two, lines 19 to 21, with the deletion of subsection D. On the motion, on that amendment, are there any objections? There's, I recognize Senator Lim Tiako on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I object to that bill, the amendment, Madam Speaker. I believe that the, there are controls in place already that require the sale of alcohol, and institutions can put into place controls to make sure that they're checking for ID. But this goes beyond bars, this goes, this is inclusive of restaurants as well. It's inclusive, it's inclusive of any establishment that sells alcohol. So my, that is my objection.
On the amendment, Senator, Senator Nicholas, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment. After the word alcohol on line 20.
After the word, which word?
Alcohol on line 20.
Twenty, okay.
I would like to add the words off premises as defined. And this amendment, Madam Speaker, will effectively exclude those establishments that are selling alcohol but are not being consumed on the premises, such as mom-and-pop stores, supermarkets, and those kind of, those kind of places.
So you want to add the words after alcohol on...
Off premises as defined.
Off premises as defined, but you have a reference to the definition.
Okay, all right. I will draw that amendment to the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so on that motion to withdraw, sorry. So on then the amendment then, on page two, to delete subsection D, lines 19 to 21, any more discussion? There, so I'm going to call on Speaker Pangolinan then to close on the amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker. I think that the intention of the amendment or the effect of the amendment has been, is maybe not as clear as I presented it. I agree, there are current laws that prohibit the sale of alcohol to those under 21. I'm just saying that the shield of liability is going to be lifted for those that are social hosts, but the shield of liability remains for those who sell alcohol at a profit. So, correct, I agree with the retiring Senator when he raised the objection of this, that there are current laws that require bars to make sure that they're 21 years old and do all these things. But they are not liable for any injury caused by anyone that may have, may circumvent that law. This, I think, is the difference, is that now we expose those that are social hosts to that liability, and we affirm their liability, but we continue to defer, being very clear, on the liability of those bars and stores that sell to those under 21. And that's what I want to do. I want to make it level and even, so that we ensure that we are going to provide the same kind of access to remedies and restitution to those families who lose loved ones because they have been served alcohol illegally, whether they'd be at a fiesta or whether it'd be at a bar. Right now, with this bill, only the ones that drink at a fiesta or at private homes who get access to alcohol at fiestas in private homes, only those, and go out and, and God forbid, you know, injure anyone that their families can get restitution, and sue those people hosting the fiesta or hosting the party at the house, the family party. But those that go to a bar, circumvent the law there somehow, go out and injure somebody, those families don't have the ability to then, under this bill and current statutes, would, to sue the bar owners for the damages that those individuals that consumed their alcohol and got access to the alcohol at their establishments, they're immune. The law is going to shield them. This is not, is going to lift that shield of liability for the homeowner and the fiesta host, but not for the bar owner. He's going to continue to be shielded, and I think that's unfair.
Since there is an objection, we're going to call for the vote. So all in favor of the amendment on page two, lines 18, 19 to 21, to be deleted? All in favor, please raise your hand. That's one that, I just want to get the clarification and the count from the clerks. On the main motion, are there any others who would like to speak? I don't have anyone on the list. Mr. Vice Speaker? I don't have anyone on the list. Mr. Vice Speaker? An opportunity to either make amendments or close?
I have nothing further to add. I just want to thank again everybody for their participation in this discussion and their deliberation. And I ask the bill be moved down to the third reading.
So on the motion then to send bill number 13-32 to the third reading file without any objections, sort of. Going to the other two bills, let me see. Let me move on to bill number 40-32, and I recognize the sponsor, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to...
I'm going to place substitute bill number...
To place bill number 40-32 COR as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, Maritime Transportation to the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 40-32 as substituted seeks to reclassify the violation of fire codes from what currently is as a misdemeanor to a civil violation. Currently, the way fire code violations are currently being handled is that the fire inspector would go out, the fire inspector from the Guam Fire Department would go out, conduct his inspection, and if he finds violations, would then write up a citation. And then that gets transmitted to the traffic court, where the judge then adjudicates that citation and assesses fines accordingly. Recently, as recent as January of 2012, the court has decided to, that it must now actually interpret the law very strictly. And the current law as written is that it classifies these violations as misdemeanors. And the procedure for then handling these violations, these misdemeanors, is that the fire department must then, should actually then have transmitted the citations to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General's office would then do whatever legal processing is necessary to bring about the charges and bring it to the court for adjudication. The reality, though, is that the Attorney General is very much limited in their manpower resources and will most likely take these citations and give it a lower priority, and instead will really focus its attention on the more serious offenses. And so what has happened then is that since the court is not, no longer accepting these citations, the Guam Fire Department has basically stopped issuing these citations. And so then, the way bill 40 proposes to rectify the situation is to, first of all, reclassify the violations as civil violations. And secondly, to provide a penalty associated with the civil violations, such that after a first, second, third offense, there's of the same fire code within a 12-month period, that then the offense will be subject to basically increasing fines. For the first offense, it'll be $100, up to $100. For the second offense, it'll be up to $400, but not less than $100. For the third offense, of the same fire code within a 12-month period, shall be subject to a penalty of no less than $1,000. And if, of course, the violator continues to violate the codes, that then, of the same fire code within that 12-month period, then the violation would be punishable as a misdemeanor, which then at that point, the fire department would then transmit this citation to the Attorney General's office for appropriate prosecution. The other thing, of course, that bill 40 does is that makes it very clear that all the fines that are assessed by the court shall be deposited into the flame fund, which according to the Guam Fire Department, that is where these fines are currently being deposited to. So, and then finally, in section four of the bill, what it does is it just updates the law by now indicating that the inspection, the conduct of inspections shall be in accordance with Section 73-111, which is actually the new fire code that was adopted a couple of years ago under the International Fire Code. And it just basically then updates the reference for these inspections. So that, Madam Speaker, is the gist of bill 40, so that it will enable the Guam Fire Department to continue enforcing the fire codes and to be able to actually assess penalties if compliance is not made. Now, one thing that the fire department made very clear at the public hearing is that actually fines or sending, transmitting the citations to the court is really a measure of last resort on their part. What they do normally is they would go out there, conduct inspections. If they find violations, they normally would point that out to the violator and then come back for a follow-up inspection. And if at that time then, they find that corrective action was not taken, then at that time, a citation will be written up and the process, you know, be taken through its due course. But otherwise, they really try to just provide education to the business owners or to the community at large. And then if that doesn't work, then of course, we go to the penalty phase. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, main motion, I recognize Senator Ogun.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I too would like to stand in support of bill number 40-32, and I commend the sponsor for introducing this particular legislation. If you take a look, Madam Speaker, at the legislative findings and intent, and the decision that was rendered by one of the judges of the Superior Court would states that traffic violations, courts and ministerial division of the courts will cease and desist from accepting uniform summons and citation complaints based on violations of any section of the Guam Fire Code until such time as inconsistencies between statute and rule are resolved. You know, I was always taught that really statute trumps a promulgated rules and regulations. And then I was brought back to be reminded that the fire code, I believe several years back, had been adopted by statute only because of the timeframe that it had, we needed it to be implemented. So perhaps that's where some of the conflict comes in in regards to the application of this whole situation. I wanted to stand up not only in support of this provision, Madam Speaker, but also to highlight that every time we enact legislation, one of the key components that is reiterated time and time again by officials from the different agencies is that you pass a law, but you need to give some teeth so that in fact, they can ensure compliance. Going out with the firefighters, going out there and trying to ensure fire safety and ensure that fire codes are being properly complied with. Apparently, it makes, I'm sure, it makes it extremely difficult, especially since the ruling that came down from the, or the decision that was rendered by the judge, that it makes it very difficult for them to aggressively go out there and cite individuals or business enterprises and not be able to have that teeth behind it. The teeth in terms of citations, in terms of imposition of fees, in terms of imposition of penalties, so that in fact, it can force that situation to be rectified or corrected. And that's what the good sponsor of this legislation is doing. But I want to also, Madam Speaker, share with yourself and the members of this body. I know there are a few that are already very cognizant of the situation. A similar situation applies to the Guam Police Department in terms of traffic violations slash citations. So that, I understand that the legislation was, has been prepared by the Attorney General's office, and it's being transmitted to one of the members of this body. But I certainly hope that that transmission will take place as quickly as possible because going an extra month, having situations where in fact, traffic citations are thrown out of court just because of some perceived inconsistencies certainly doesn't send the right message out to the community. So I encourage the immediate transmission. I understand the AG during the hearing had committed to transferring or transmitting that particular legislation to one of the senators within the next couple of days, and that was two days ago, I believe, when the hearing was held on this particular measure. So we look forward to, or I look forward to also discussing similar provisions, similar concept, but this time it applies to the Guam Police Department in terms of traffic citations, traffic violations. So this will take care of the fire code compliance and the enforcement and the citation, the citing of all of these businesses and individuals who may not be in compliance with fire code requirements. But then the other component certainly also has to be addressed. Just to alert yourself and our colleagues that perhaps in the next legislative session, that would be an item that would be discussed. So I stand in full support of this legislation, and I commend the sponsor for moving forward with this as expeditiously as he has. And I look forward also to entertaining the other half of this equation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill as well. After speaking to the fire department last night and the Attorney General's office, it does seem to me that there is a non-level playing field when it comes to these violations. And I think in the business community, I think playing on a level playing field and making sure that we are following the code and the law to make sure that it is safe for our people and the infrastructure is safe, I think it's very important. Having said that, a lot of business owners, I believe, will have no problem paying $100 fine or $300 or $400 fine. So I would like to proffer an amendment on the second page in the language. When it says fourth offense of the same fire code within 12 months, and when it shall be punishable by a misdemeanor, I would like to add after misdemeanor and revocation of business license up to one year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. So there is an amendment on page two, line 17, after the word misdemeanor, to add the words and revocation of business license up to one year. On the amendment, there being no objections to the amendment? Sort. On the main motion, I recognize Senator...
Just as a technical point, I guess. So then that amendment actually should apply to, on line 17, and of page two, and I presume, and also on line four, correction, on line two of page three.
Yes, and so legal counsel will, because we have the general amendment that they would be for any technical corrections. So then unless you want to make this formally, Senator Tom Ada, do you want to make that then as a formal then amendment that it then, the legal counsel would do the exact same thing for, from...
Yes, Madam Speaker, and that to allow the legal counsel to make any technical corrections as appropriate.
On that motion without any objection, sort of. Speaker Panglinen, wait, I'm sorry. I have Senator Yamashita first and then, Senator Yamashita. Oh, it's done? The amendment went down already? Yes. Oh, to speak on the amendment? I'm so sorry, I missed you. There being no objection then for me to recognize Speaker Panglinen? Thank you, so, so Speaker Panglinen, then you recognize, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to ensure that, you know, that somebody who may be, you know, consistently violating it, we also know that these companies have employees who depend, whose livelihood depends on their being in business. And, you know, we all, when they get irresponsible and they continue to violate the fire code and they finally, you know, find responsibility after the fourth offense, that we allow them, once they correct a deficiency, pay the fine, to reinstate their business license so that it doesn't really, so that now the business has complied, fixed the violations, but he still can't operate for up to one year. So it would be, you know, a revocation of the business license, and if I understood the amendment, for up to one year, which may be restored earlier upon the cure of the violation. So that if it takes him a month or two months to cure the violation, you know, he doesn't have to stay out of business for another 10 months, that he can then get his license reinstated and provide, you know, the living wage for their employees. So that would be my amendment to the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is right after revocation of business license up to one year, which, and add the words, which may be restored earlier when the violation is cured.
Correct. Or remedied. When the violations are remedied, cured or remedied.
Madam Speaker, may we take a quick recess?
Yes, I would, I would, recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So the final sentence after misdemeanor and the fourth offense will read, suspended up to a year or until the violation has been cured.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Speaker, do you still wish to speak? You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I mean, I have no objections to the bill, but I do have some concerns that maybe we can, at least to just generate some discussion. The concern I have is that although these are, we're talking about some businesses who are in violation, but we also know that in particular our DOE schools have these 14 points. And one of them is having the fire department go into the schools to make sure that the facility is safe, that they are following all the fire codes, they look at the fire extinguishers. And one of the main violations, at least for DOE, is that, one, is they don't have a fire alarm system that would go out to all the classrooms, letting then the children know that there is maybe a fire or even for a fire drill. The second then is that there's many times too, some of these fire extinguishers have not been re-filled, you know, examined, inspected, to make sure that they are ready for use in case there is an emergency. And the response has been, that's been accepted at least by the fire department, meanwhile, until such time that the department is able to get monies to either install fire alarm systems throughout the schools, is to actually provide for what they call a fire watch, a person, an individual, an adult, a school aide, or any of the staff, that then would be the individual going around in place of a fire alarm system. And so that's the big concern. And how then would this violation then be addressed for the department? Usually what it is, is yes, corrective actions will be taken, this is one such thing. However, there's been a case, and we all know, is that we've had closures of schools, not one school, but several schools, for one reason or another. And this can be one item that immediately, today, just looking at it and knowing the situation, they would be in violation and they would be beyond maybe even the fourth, you know, offense. Therefore, are we going to have DOE pay for this? The government, the legislature would have to pay for this? Would the principals of the schools have to pay for this? The safety officers of the Department of Education? I mean, I really don't have the answers for this, but this is something that I like for us to think about. I'm not asking definitely for a waiver or a grandfathering of our schools, because we definitely want our children to be safe, at all times, our facilities to be safe as well. It's just that how do we do handle this with the fire department? Because at one time, the very first time, as a matter of fact, when they were going out to do the inspection, they had the Attorney General with them to go out and to really then use, you know, the arm of that office to close schools. And, you know, when that happens, it becomes very expensive for the government, for the department, with loss of school days, instructional time, and naturally, we will continue to have to pay for the employees and everyone, and the teachers, even when schools are closed. So it becomes a very expensive venture for the department. So I don't know. I throw this out, because then I'd like for us to kind of maybe have this dialogue to see then how we can address this. Not making any amendments to do any exemptions or grandfathering, because I don't want that. I just don't want to see us down this road with them for Section 2 and 3. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any senator wish to address the issues raised by the good speaker? Senator Lim, Tiaco, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, in line with the Madam Speaker's line of reasoning, I would raise concerns that it would apply to all government agencies, not just Department of Education. And are we prepared to have to retrofit any government agency or building that is in violation of the fire code? And if so, how would we fund it? So I think it would be a good topic for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on it?
The legislature is back in session on the main motion. Does anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? There being none, I call the author to close, Senator Tom Attah. To close or send it. So the motion then to send forty dash thirty-two as substituted to the third reading file without any objections, so.
You guys are not in sync. He said, oh, Ben's not here, let's move it down. Speaker Ben left the room, hurry, hurry.
Well then, Madam Speaker, now standing in the House rules, I'd like to make a motion to re-.
Okay, the legislature is back in session. I had called for anyone who would like to speak on the main motion, and there wasn't any, and I asked the author if he would like to close, and he said to go ahead and send it down, and that was then the motion that I acted on by sending it down to third reading. So procedurally, yes, that's what happened.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I apologize, you know, when you gotta go, you gotta go. And I was out of the room when the motion was made to send it down to third, but I had raised my hand when the bill was introduced, I wanted to speak on the main bill, of course, and so now standing in the House rules, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on the sending of Bill forty dash thirty-two as substituted by committee down to third reading, to put it back into second, and that we allow additional discussion on the bill.
Are there any objections? No objections, so.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do want, I want to just provide some perspective on the bill and what one of the things it does here with regards to where the fines go, and a perspective that we have with regards to the policy that not only this legislature has, but most legislatures have and most communities have, when it comes to the issuance of fines and who those fines shall be, shall benefit selectively as a policy. We do know that, for example, the Guam Police Department issues traffic violation certificates, I mean, traffic violation citations, but the fines do not go to the Guam Police Department, they actually go to the judicial building fund of the legislature, and that is because human nature being human nature, and what we have seen across the country, for example, is that when police, those in law enforcement want to be beyond temptation, beyond reproach in terms of how they enforce the law, that there is no direct benefit to them for the enforcement of law under their jurisdiction, and we find that when they do have direct benefits, there tends to be an increase in the enforcement of the law. Now, is that a good thing? Because we also found that in a lot of times, it was excessive, and the courts have ruled it excessive and entrapment, and that they've actually thrown out these citations because of the aggressive nature of the collections, all linked to the fact that they get to keep the fines. So when the police department, policeman's balls coming up, they start issuing tickets, or, you know, the overtime's not being paid, they start issuing tickets. We saw these in the communities across the states, and so that's why as a general policy, those fines don't go to GPD. Here, we have now these fines by the fire department going to GFD, and so we don't really want to place GFD in a position where the public perception can say that, man, they're just enforcing that because they want a new car or they want a new truck. Now, I don't mind the application fees, the inspection fees, the service fees for that to go to the fire department, because that's a service they provide. So when we created the flame fund, there was discussion on where the fines should go, should they come, and at that time, I was the same concerned. The fines really should not go to the flame fund. The application fees and the inspection fees should, because that's a service they provide, and they need to recoup some of their costs, but to ensure that we don't give any opportunity for the public to question the issuance of these fines and fees, that those be segregated and those continue to go to the general fund, and then we can appropriate them to the department, to the fire department or to other needs of the agency, because the fire department, remember, it doesn't generate its own revenue and operate based on the revenues that it generates from their authorities vested to collect any kind of revenue. It gets twenty-eight, twenty-seven million dollars from the general fund, so putting the fees into the general fund can give us an opportunity in that appropriation process to give them back what they need in order to ensure that we provide them with the resources. But again, we don't want that perception to occur, so I would like to make an amendment, Madam Speaker, to delete section C of section two, and the same with section C of section three, and to delete those, once again, just to continue the general policy that we, that communities across the states is fine, in order to actually assist in the protection of the integrity of the fine process of, and issuance of these citations and violations by the Guam Fire Department, the same way we're trying, we protect the Guam Police Department from being, you know, having that perception that they'll issue these things when it directly benefits them, and so, Madam Speaker, that would be my amendment.
On the amendment, Senator Tom Attah, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I rise in objection to that amendment for two reasons. First of all, currently, when the traffic court assesses penalties on these fire code violations, the fines are, in fact, deposited into the flame fund. Current statute does state specifically that fines will, fines and other fees and all that actually goes to the, goes to the flame fund account, but the other, the other reason for my objection to this is, I'm really, I'm annoyed by this implication of this self-serving enforcement of the fire code, that because maybe they may need something, they're gonna go out there and become more aggressive with their enforcement or not, and I guess it's, I guess it's, my outlook is that, you know, people wake up in the morning thinking about what kind of good things can we do today, and not so much as to what sort of, how can I squeeze more out of people so that I can meet my needs here, and so it's kind of an indictment on the fire department, that in fact, they would stoop to that level to do that, to be aggressive in their enforcement, to meet their needs, and on top of that, it also is an indictment on the courts, that they're gonna be accomplices to this sort of behavior, and so I just find that really rather annoying, and I have, I have faith and confidence in our fire department and our police department that, that they're supposed, that they're out there to enforce the laws, and because on this day, they decide they're gonna make, they're gonna inspect six facilities as opposed to the normal three, I mean, who's to say that they, they did not instead then reallocate their time to conduct more inspections based on trends that have been finding, I mean, for any number of reasons, but, but I object to the amendment, and I, the fines are currently going to the flame fund after it's been adjudicated by the court, and so, you know, if I, so I'll just leave it at that, and I object to the amendment.
On the amendment, does anybody else who would like to speak? Really making sure I look. There being none, I'm going to allow the mover of the amendment then to close.
Very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the perspective given by the author, but, you know, after the public hearing, I had discussions with the, with the fire chief, the acting fire chief and others, and they realized that sometimes it's perception that becomes reality, so that even if the fire are doing their job, the public perception can be different, and it makes their job harder when the public perception turns against them, and that's really what I'm trying to do here. So they say, yes, no, I agree with you, that we don't want to provide any opportunity, and we want to minimize the opportunity for the general public or the business community out there, who's now, you know, got four inspections at his facility in three months, where the other guy down the street has one in one year, and he says, why am I being targeted, and then he gets fined, so, because they want a new truck, and we want to prevent the public, that kind of public perception from developing, and how do you do that? When you shield the fire department from benefiting directly for the amount of, we do that for the police department, we do that because we realize that that's a policy that has been looked at, not only by this community, but communities across the country, legislatures, municipal councils, state legislatures, and county legislatures have looked at this, and in the experience that they have and in the history of this policy, they find that that occurs, and then it's, it's harder for then the enforcement agencies to try and set it right, so why put these people in that position? Let it be our job to make sure that when the money comes into the general fund, that we give them what they need, and again, the flame fund was set so that the application fees and the inspection fees, but not the citation and the violation fees, would go in there, because there's nobody else that can issue those, that provide those services, and they should be paid for those services, but the violations are a completely different matter, and again, Madam Speaker, that really is my only objective here, and I, and when we discussed, when I had some offline conversation, the fire, some of the fire people, you know, we don't do that, I know, but he says, but we realize that that could be something that we face with the public and the perception, and if we don't have that, then there is no need to develop that kind of suspicion or, or any kind of questioning by the communities and the businesses out there that may be faced with these violations and citations. So really, Madam Speaker, it's not an indictment on them, it's to protect them from being indicted by the misperception of what, when they're just trying to do their job, and so it really isn't to indict them, it's to protect them from being indicted by public perception. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, so there, sorry, that he was closing. So there is an objection, so I'm going to call for the vote. Please state your point of information.
I'm trying to pull up from the internet, but, you know, right now, Title 10, Chapter seventy-two, Section seventy-one oh six clearly states that fines are to go to the flame fund. In the case of citations here, what we're talking about is that, that fine becomes assessed when the judge has adjudicated it, so I asked that very question at the public hearing, is there ever an instance where a fire inspector would go out, write up a citation, give it directly to that violator, and say, here, pay up on this fine, and they said, no, that does not happen. The only time that that fine gets collected on is after it's been adjudicated by the court. So if there's gonna be any protection or shielding from any shenanigans, it's in the court that happens, and the law right now allows, states that these fines will go to the flame fund.
Thank you very much for that point of information.
Madam Speaker, I understand that. It's the same with the GPD. The fines don't get paid until it's adjudicated in the court, yet, we don't give it directly to GPD. So it, my question is, again, as I mentioned earlier, when the original bill was debated, you know, my position back then, and I'm reiterating that, is that, you know, do we want to continue that policy where we don't have that policy for the other law enforcement agency, because we want to shield them from being indicted by the public perception, and that, should we give the same kind of protecting to the fire department, and that's really my call to this body to reexamine that policy by making the amendment to delete this.
I'm gonna call then for the vote, since there is an objection, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Well, make it clear that you understand that the amendment here, by Speaker Pangolinan, is on page two, lines eighteen and nineteen, and page three, lines three and four, to be deleted. So all in favor of the amendment, the Pangolinan amendment, please raise your hand. So, all in favor of the amendment, the Pangolinan amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed. So, on the motion now then to send it down one more time to third reading file without I'm going to recognize the majority leader for a motion.
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My first motion is relative to a request that the vice speaker and I have made of you to waive the public hearing requirement for Bill 43-32, and, as you know, this bill was introduced by the vice speaker and yourself, and it's an act to add a new B1 and 2 to subsection 67.801, and to add a new subsection 67.802, and subsection 67.803 to Article 8 of Chapter 67 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Strengthening the Penalties for the Possession, Manufacturing, Selling, or Distribution of Any Synthetic Cananabinoid or Salvia Divinorum or Spice. And so, this letter was presented to you, asking if you would graciously consider the waiver of this public hearing as it deals with the health and safety of our community, and it's also something that this previous legislature passed, but the vice speaker's attempt here is to update this law so that these distributors do not circumvent or find any additional loopholes which allows for the continued sale of spice here on the island. And so, thankfully, Madam Speaker, you immediately responded by saying, after carefully evaluating the request to waive the requirement of a public hearing on this bill, you then certified that this bill meets the requirements set forth in Section 2103A of Title II GCA, and the requirement for a public hearing is hereby waived, and so I thank you for that.
Okay, so on that motion then to place, then, what wants to, in my letter, I waive the public hearing on that, but now the motion is to place then Bill 43-32 on the second reading file without any objections, so.
And, Madam Speaker, the other resolution is introduced by yourself, and it's relative to the appointment of Ms. Anne Marie Timunia to serve as the alternate director of the Guam Business Bureau Board of Directors, and since this appointment is subject to the advice and consent of the legislature, I then moved that this resolution be placed on the second reading file for discussion and consideration.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. I'd like to recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I ask that Bill Number 23-32, which is currently the third reading file, be reverted to the second reading file. Madam Speaker, as we've been working closely with land management on this particular measure for near a year now, it has just most recently been learned that a family has stepped forward and has raised some information about this particular piece of land, and so we would like to communicate and further develop this before we move further on this measure.
So on that motion then, I used to take Bill 23-32 out of third reading file and place it on the second reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator, oh, wait, okay, so we're still on the second, and we're still in the second reading file, I mean, Senator, is there anything else?
Wait, Dennis, do you have committee reports?
Okay, so, this afternoon or now? We're gonna take a brief recess. Senators, we're going to take a lunch recess at this time, and I would like members to come back at 1:30. Okay, so we're in recess.